Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening, good afternoon.
And welcome to the Planning Committee, Thursday 15th of March. I have a few household notes to read out first, so first of all to introduce myself, councillor Dedman, I'm chairing the committee tonight, and members and officers do have their names in front of them, so you can see who we are. Each application is presented by the appropriate case officer. After each presentation, those members of the public who have written to the council requesting to speak will be invited to take the seat at the opposite end of the table. The time allocation is three minutes, and this is going to be strictly timed and enforced by the vice chairman, so be careful. Speeches must relate to material planning issues and must not be derogatory. No questioning is allowed, no further written information, photographs, plans or other material can be submitted at this stage. Applications on the agenda with speakers will be dealt with first, but the running order tonight, as it happens, is as is, so that works out well. And if you do have any questions on any of that, please come to us after the meeting. If the meeting were to extend between nine, which I think is unlikely this evening, I would ask for a proposal to extend the meeting, and then once the item under discussion at that time is resolved, the meeting would be adjourned and reconvene on another evening. I must ask everybody, which is what we always ask, to ensure that mobile phones are switched off or on to silent, and obviously, everybody to remain quiet while the meeting is in progress. Tonight's meeting will be filmed by the council and broadcast live on the internet, and it is capable of repeated showings, so if you're in the chamber at any point, it's possible that the camera will capture you. So by your presence, you are deeming now to consent to be filmed and to the use of the images and recordings for webcasting for training. And if you address the committee, your contribution will be recorded and broadcast unless we're in private session, as permitted by the access to information provisions. And as the chairman of the meeting, I can, at my discretion, terminate or suspend filming if in my opinion continuing to do so would prejudice the proceedings of the meeting, or if I think that continued filming might infringe the rights of any individual or breach any statutory provision. The only other thing to say is that if there is a fire, the fire exits, they're behind me, and you will be helped out in that event. I think we can now get on with apologies for absence. Daniel, item one, please.
Yes, chairman, apologies from councillor Gary and councillor Watts.
Declarations of interest, members. Gracious. Councillor, Mr Jones first.
Thank you, chairman. This is in relation to item three, the application for St Margaret's Avenue. Although I do not have any form of pecuniary or disclosable interest, obviously, I do know the applicant very well, but it is suggested that as I know the applicant rather more closely than I may some of my colleagues, and I have been in the, we do know each other socially and do intermingle socially, it is possible that a perception of bias may arise, and therefore, I intend to withdraw.
Thank you councillor Jones. I think councillor Mrs Jones was the next speaker.
Madam Chairman, I have the same interest in item two C, St Margaret's Avenue, a non-financial, but what might be regarded as a prejudicial interest, therefore I will leave.
Thank you councillor Jones. Councillor Spittle?
I sympathise with my colleagues on my right, and, you know, bearing in mind, I have councillor Hall on my left, and he was, he did serve as my deputy mayor when, at the time when I was mayor, et cetera, and, you know, and through our councillor work, we have socialised, et cetera, but I don't feel I have a prejudicial interest, and then subject to the confirmation by the lawyer, by the solicitor.
Sorry councillor, what was that? Sorry, I didn't catch what you were saying. Chair caught my ear and then I was trying to listen to you.
It's just, no, no, it's sort of similar, similar to my colleagues on my right, and bearing in mind, I have always sat next to councillor Hall, and have been on the council for twenty, almost twenty years, and during the time that I was mayor, he was deputy mayor, et cetera, so we did tend to have socialised. I just want, I feel I haven't got a prejudicial interest, actually, certainly not a non pecuniary.
I think that's fair councillor. Some of the members of the public may have saw myself talking to councillor Jones at the start, he was taking advice as to whether or not he should recuss himself, based upon the submission he just made, and councillor Jones, sorry, has taken that advice. In terms of yourself councillor Spittle, the simple test is, in law, whether or not a fair-minded, fully informed observer would think that you've, if you like, there's a concluded view on the matter. So it's essentially a matter for your own conscience, if you feel that that friendship or the acquaintance, or whatever phrase you might want to call the relationship with your colleague councillor Hall, is enough to create, if you like, an objective perception of bias. That's all I can say. The test in law is not black or white, and I can quote from the actual case if you want, and it's coming from the case of Porter and McGill, and it's simply put, whether the fair-minded and informed observer, having considered the facts, would conclude that there was a real possibility that you yourself was biased. That's the test, and it's a matter for you as to if you feel, whether or not that relationship should recuss you from that particular decision.
Yeah, if I could just come back, I am aware, having lived in that area for a substantial amount of time, that I do know his two immediate neighbours, but neither of them, have I, neither of them have lodged any objection.
I can't come, I don't know.
You've not had any objections from the neighbours, have you?
Councillor, I think to be safe, where you've got some doubts, I advise you to withdraw and recuss yourself. Thank you.
Yes, thank you councillor Spittle, that was, yes, it was, it was, it was an interesting insight, wasn't it really, in that? Councillor Hall, I imagine we know what you're going to say.
Yes, madam chairman, yes, it is my application, and I should certainly leave the meeting. I've already filled in the form declaring that, and the proper date and signed, so I should leave the meeting. Thank you.
I think, Chair, through you, perhaps if the members are going to raise these issues at the night of the committee, do bear in mind the officers are upstairs, the legal team are upstairs, please come in, obviously catch my ear, or one of the solicitors up there, because obviously, it's best if we can give you the advice, rather than doing off-the-hoof legal advice in a public forum. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you so much for that advice, yeah, it was only, normally we'd stay in, actually, don't we, for colleagues, but on this occasion...
I would just like to reiterate that I too have been on the council a long time, I sit opposite him quite a lot in planning, I was also, he was also a governor at junior school when I was vice chairman, so I have known him for a long, long time, but I have no reason to make any assumption that I'm doing any favours for anyone.
Thank you councillor Neil, I think that's an interesting insight onto our relationship with councillor Hall, because I'm not going to say any more about my relationship with councillor Hall, thank you. Councillor Jones, do you want to come back on that, or is there a different...
Do you, chairman? Just as a matter of interest, and I'm sure that this wouldn't apply on to anyone on this council, but does the negative also apply? For example, if you were known to be, if councillor A were known to be a vitriolic opponent of councillor B, and councillor A had submitted a planning application, would councillor B have to withdraw?
Councillor, I don't want to obviously advise on hypothetical matters that are not before the committee, but it's a fair point, and it's one that I don't want, obviously want to engage with, but I think on that particular issue, it's one where you would probably need to have legal advice, because given the vitriolic relationship between... Thank you.
I don't think that would apply to anybody on this council, none of us are vitriolic, thank you councillor Jones. I'm going to move on now, after item two has taken so long, to item three, the minutes, to confirm as the correct record, the minutes of the meeting of the planning committee on 15th of February, copy attached, I was unable to be there, so I'm handing over to my vice chair. There is an update on the update sheet, and I am happy to propose with the amendments on the update sheet. So that's confirmed, seconded, are we all in agreement? Thank you, thank you members. We're going to go, oh sorry, we're going to go to Two Cricket Close, Muddyford, which we have all got on our sheets, and can I ask you, Mrs... Members, I'd like to introduce my colleague Greg Lester, who is the case officer on this application, who will be taking this matter this evening.
Hi, thank you Chair. The application is a full planning application at Two Cricket Close, Muddyford, for single storey side and rear extensions, alterations to roof including raising ridge height, one number front dormer, two number side dormers, along with the demolition of the existing garage. Here we see the site location plan, which shows the extent of the site, and also any near neighbours and its relationship to them. This plan shows the locations of letters received from objectors, and the details of the objections that have been received are summarised at section 6.02, contained within the report in your agenda. Here we have a few photographs, which just show the existing situation of the site, and working clockwise from photograph A, that shows the street scene of Cricket Close and the front elevation of number two Cricket Close, which is this property here, and you can see 129 Muddyford Lane, just there where the cursor is there. Photograph B is looking towards 129 Muddyford Lane, just from the front of the application site. Photograph C shows the rear elevation and 129 Muddyford Lane, so that's 129 Muddyford Lane just there, and that's taken from the back of the rear garden. And photograph D is taken from the approximate position of the existing garage, and shows the flats just through the gap in the vegetation at the boundary of the site. We now move on to some photographs that are taken from a neighbouring property at 129 Muddyford Lane, and there's three photographs that have been taken from either within the kitchen or immediately outside the kitchen, and that would be this photograph at the top left, one at the bottom left here, and the bottom right, with the one in the top right being taken from the outdoor sitting area on the patio area of 129 Muddyford Lane. On this plan, we can see the relationship a little bit better between the site and the near neighbours, there's 129 Muddyford Lane there, one Cricket Close, and here you can see the actual extent of the proposal, so this, the single storey extension that wraps around the property, two dorm windows on the side, one dorm window to the front, and a cropped gable to the rear. Here we have the existing elevations of the property, and the existing floor plan. This slide shows not only the existing proposal currently before committee, but it also includes details of the previous planning applications that have been submitted, there have been two previous proposals, and those are shown on the side elevation here by the black dashed line. The one around the edge there that I'm indicating with the cursor represent the first proposal that was refused, and the second set of dash lines just here represent the second application that was refused and subsequently dismissed at appeal. The reason for dismissal at appeal was due to an overbearing impact on the neighbouring occupiers at 129 Muddyford Lane. However, it's important to note, and it's included at paragraph 8.6 in the report, that the inspector concluded that there was no overlooking in dismissing that appeal, and that is the reason why on the rear elevation, the proposed fenestration and Juliet balcony remain from the previous proposal. It's also worth noting that the site at Two Cricket Close does benefit from full PD rights, and that is a legitimate fallback position that the applicant could do without any further express planning permission being granted by the council, so we have to consider that as part of the application process. This is the floor plan that just shows the proposal, with the red dotted line being the floor plan of the existing bungalow, the approximate extent of the existing bungalow and existing garage, and then we have the first floor plan and roof plan of the proposal. I briefly mentioned previously the existing permitted development rights that exist at Two Cricket Close, and this is to show an indicative scheme of what could potentially be done using those permitted development rights. I mean, obviously, this isn't necessarily a scheme that will be completed, it's just to give an idea of what could be done utilising those rights. It could be similar to this, it could be slightly larger or slightly smaller, depending on how their provisions are used, that are subject of the general permitted development order. And that's just the indicative floor plans from that previous slide. So having given due consideration to all of the elements that are presented in the report and slides that I have just shown, and the revisions to the scheme reducing the ridge height and the bulk of the extension, it has been considered that they have, on balance, overcome previous reasons for refusal and the reason for the dismissal of the appeal, and it is therefore recommended for approval, subject to conditions contained within the planning report.
Right, thank you very much, I think that was very clear. Now we move on to public speakers. I've got Mr Siddens first, is that right? Thank you, if you'd like to come to the table. Right, if you'd like to just take a minute to introduce yourself, and then we'll start the clock, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Russell Siddens, and I live at 129 Muddyford Lane, which is located next door to the proposed development at Two Cricket Close, with a rear-to-side relationship. Okay. As you may recall, we have been to committee before. On both occasions, the committee refused the application. Following the last refusal, the application went to appeal, and the planning inspector concluded that the appeal be dismissed, and agreed with the committee's decision to refuse for the following reasons: loss of privacy resulting in perceived and actual overlooking to the neighbouring property, to the detriment of the amenities of the occupiers; and the bulk and mass of the proposed extensions would lead to a detrimental impact on the amenities of the neighbouring property, contrary to policy HE2 of the Christchurch and East Dorset local plan. We feel that these reasons still apply and have not been taken into account when submitting the new plans. The back of the property remains unchanged, and the size of the roof facing us has not significantly changed. Therefore, our objections, along with those from One Cricket Close and the Residents' Association at Muddyford Court, sorry, Mute Haven Court, still very much stand. We have considered the planning policies and feel that the proposed plans still contravene the following: policy H12 criterion two, the residential amenities of our dwelling will be adversely affected by loss of privacy and loss of light. Both our garden and amenity area, lounge and kitchen diner are currently not overlooked and are private. However, the proposed development would result in a level of overlooking and perceived overlooking that would be detrimental. Even the planning officer states that the rear-facing first floor windows and doors of the Juliet balcony will allow a degree of overlooking to our patio area. The proposed development is at such an angle that our patio with seating and hot tub would be overlooked from the top rooms at the rear of the development, resulting in a serious invasion of our privacy. We note that two of the windows and the balcony glass will be obscure glazed, however, this does not mitigate the overlooking issue. The doors can still be opened and looked out of into our garden and private patio area, even more so than if this was just a window. There will also be two windows at ground floor level directly on our boundary that will cause direct overlooking. Although the officer's report states this will not cause material harm, this is a view taken by someone who does not have to live with the potential overlooking issue. And the increase in the size of the development and proximity to our boundary will also result in a significant loss of light and overshadowing. Although some changes have been made to the front of the property, which sits beyond our boundary, we still feel that the development facing us will have a dominating impact. I'm now going to pass you on to my wife Gemma, who will continue to talk about policy HE2. Thank you for listening.
Right, thank you very much, Mr Siddens. Now, Mrs Siddens, you're coming on behalf of the Residents' Association, is that right? Good. Yes, yes, okay. Right, same applies then, if you'd like to settle down and tell us who you are, and then we'll start the clock. Could you pop your mic on, please?
Sorry. Hi, I'm Gemma Siddens, and I also live at 129 Muddyford Lane, and I do apologise, because my head's all over the place, because I've got a three-week-old baby, so I'm sleep deprived. Policy HE2, so a new development due to its scale, bulk, height, materials, and the visual impact should not cause disturbance to neighbouring properties and their amenity areas. The proposed development is most evident from the rear of our property, where we have a rear-to-side relationship. The enlarged roof will extend 0.9 metres over the proposed ground floor extension, and the ridge length will be increased from 1.1 metre to 5.5 metres. The planning inspector states that the roof pitch would not be particularly gentle, and the length of the ridge would be substantially greater than at present whilst also being higher. As a result, there would be a significant increase in the expanse of roof facing our dwelling. The building will nearly, will be nearly 30 metres in length, and therefore be an overbearing and intrusive form of development on the majority of our boundary. The current property sits 2.75 metres from our boundary, but the proposal is to build within 0.5 metres, which will only leave a nine-metre rear-to-side relationship, which is unacceptable. We do not have a substantial screening along all of our boundary, and therefore be able to see the majority of the building. The planning inspector comments that the extent of the increase in the bulk and mass of the host dwelling would be unacceptable, especially given the proximity to the back garden and rear of our property. This would result in unpleasant and oppressive sense of enclosure, with the enlarged dwelling appearing overbearing when seen from our garden, kitchen and lounge. He concludes that the overbearing impact on our living conditions would be harmful, and therefore be contrary to the intentions of the Christchurch and East Dorset local plan. We have been through the plan, had through planning ourselves, and have worked with the planning department and our neighbours to develop our property in accordance with planning guidelines. We were unable to have a Juliet balcony on the rear of our property due to overlooking a side kitchen window and obscure glazed bathroom window at Two Cricket Close, and therefore our rear windows are at 1.7 metres from floor to mitigate any overlooking or perceived overlooking, and we would hope that consistent approach be applied. Although I'm currently on maternity leave, I normally work part-time so that I can look after my young children, and we spend a great deal of time at home and in the garden, which they love. I find it unacceptable that the proposed development would have such a detrimental impact on our lives, and that my children's privacy could be put at risk in this way. And we believe that we have a right to maintain the current level of privacy that we have in our house and our garden. On behalf of Mute Haven Court and One Cricket Close, we feel our objections are considered as planning-related issues, and our comments relate to the proposed development being contrary to local policies. They have also been highlighted in the inspectorate's report and by the committee previously. To conclude, we feel that our objections are just. Hopefully, we have been able to represent to you the significant impact the proposed development will have, and we are very concerned that this application is to be granted, it will have a detrimental impact on our quality of life, and we ask you to put yourselves in our position and consider how you would feel if this was your home and your back garden.
Right, thank you very much. Very beautifully timed.
Thank you.
Thank you, so that was Mr and Mrs Siddens. Now, I believe we have Mr Park, agent for the applicant, thank you very much.
Good evening, Chair and members, I am Ken Park, and I'm a planning consultant representing the applicants. Members, the applicants are simply and reasonably seeking to extend and improve their very modest bungalow, to bring it up to a modern living standard, commensurate with the neighbouring properties. Members, there are no character issues here, and previous schemes have not been refused for character reasons, and to be perfectly clear, nor are there any overlooking issues. The previous inspector ruled that there was no potential for overlooking, perceived or otherwise, and that's clearly stated in the appeal decision, and the inspector considered any impact on the garden and the sitting-out area of number 129. The only issue is the impact of the roof on the adjoining property. Now, the previous scheme was considered to have an overbearing impact, not for any single reason, but due to a combination of height, length of ridge and steep angle. It follows, therefore, to address this issue, the overall presence of the roof needs to be reduced. Now, the proposals before you, in combination, reduce the length of the ridge by approximately one-third. This in turn reduces the overall mass of the roof by about 30%. The proposals also reduce the angle and height of the roof, so that they are now only marginally higher than the existing. Members, these significant reductions address the inspector's concerns. The presence of the roof will not be overbearing, it will not be dominant, it's of domestic scale and proportion, and commensurate with other properties within the area, and you've seen what those reductions are on the plan before you. Any further reductions would not be possible, because it would compromise the accommodation to a point where it not, where it wouldn't be meaningful. So, members, if permission is refused, the applicant's only other option is to utilise permitted development rights. And to illustrate what these are like, the scheme has been submitted, which shows a very unsightly dormer roof arrangement, which is allowed without any requirement to submit a planning application. The irony is this, the permitted development scheme has actually got a greater impact than what is being applied for. The permitted development scheme would result in perceived overlooking, because there would be side windows, and it is significantly less attractive than what is being applied for. So, members, the scheme before you is acceptable, it addresses the inspector's concern, and it is an attractive and good-looking proposal. The permitted development scheme is not. We would ask you to approve the proposals on their own merits, but notwithstanding that, it has to be attached to the material fallback consideration. And, members, my clients would not like to build that, they want to build an attractive dwelling, but still, at the same time, they do wish to improve their property, but I would call upon you to grant planning permission. Thank you.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mr Park. Now, we have councillor Hilliard, who is the ward councillor, thank you, if you could come forward.
Thank you, chairman, members, for allowing me to speak against a proposal. Looking before us now, as the inspector said in his reason for refusal, the main aspect was the bulk and mass to the neighbours at 129. Now, if we look at the side elevation at the top, the, in effect, the bulk is at the back, which affects 129. The loss of, the reduction in height and mass at the front does not really affect 129, because the boundary fence, as you can see from a previous map, doesn't impact them so much, it's the rear bulk and mass is what affects them, and that's what the inspector has focused on, and that has not been reduced at all. And if you look at section three, the changes of heights and lengths and things like that, again, minimal reductions have been made, focusing on the back part, and that is what the inspector has chosen to do. I know it's not a consideration which, well, the inspector sort of discounted it, but if you don't mind going back to the site map, looking, keep going back, where you see the neighbouring properties, it's just really, yeah, that's ideal. So it's 129, the bottom corner of 129's garden, that is laid to patio, and that has got a hot tub. Now, as you can imagine, in the summer, if you, if there is, yeah, there is a north and south, in the summer, that bottom part of the garden is the predominant area which gets the sunlight to the latest part of the day, so to not say that there will not be, with a Juliet balcony where people can, in effect, lean over the obscure balcony, to say there's no, it's not perceived, it is actual overlooking would be there. I know you can't really... I know you, you can't really focus on that too much, but it is there. But the main point is, the bulk and mass is there, hasn't changed one bit. The, the owners of, as we heard, the owners of 129 Muddford Lane applied for a Juliet balcony and if you don't mind going back to the pictures showing one of the views of, that's the one, so the top right, that, that top window, the triangle window at the top, obviously, what the people in that property wanted that to be a Juliet balcony, from their property, they can actually see glimpses of Hengersbury Head. Now, the property at Cricket Close, their Juliet balcony, their rear wind, rear aspect is directly at the block of flats behind. So, it, we're looking for consistency. So, 129 with a view, didn't get a Juliet, this Cricket Close without a view, potentially are going for it. And finally, on the aspect of permitted development, again, I, I believe that overlooking would be a key consideration of permitted development. So, that side window, as we saw, would have to be obscured and similarly, we would hope that those rear Juliet and windows similarly would need to be obscured. So, the permitted development is considerably less bulk and mass and that, again, that is what the inspector focused on in his dismissal and that's what we hope you will focus on now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you councillor Hilliard. Vice Chairman.
Sorry, I was waiting to hear you go, say we were going into questions.
I thought you had something to say other than that. We will, we will now go into questions from the members, so the vice chairman was first off the mark here.
I have three questions. Firstly, when we look at the site plans, the plan of, and where it shows 129, is that the current, they're always, does their extension show on that? Because the photographs look considerably closer than their actual block plan does.
Yes, it's not, it's not clear on that plan whether it is as, as it exists now or whether that was a previous scheme. It's, it's not indicated on that plan unfortunately. Go back to the photographs and it will give some idea of the relationship between 129 Muddford Lane and Two Cricket Close. It looks like, yeah, on this, this site location plan here, it appears that it is slightly closer than on the previous one.
Thank you. Secondly, when we look at the inspector's appeal and the new application, the application has been changed at the front rather than at the rear. Is that because the permitted development applies to the rear of the property, whereas in order to change the front of the property, you have to have planning permission because it would change the street scene?
Yes, permitted development applies mainly to the, to the rear of the property, as the vice chairman has said. I think the applicants have tried to reduce the overall bulk of the property. So, I think if we go back to the, the plans that show the changes, on this plan in front of you, the red line is the existing bungalow and its existing height. And if you look at the front elevation and the rear elevation, the reduction in, in height on the proposal does reduce, does actually mean that the roof height of the extension is now not significantly greater than the roof height of the existing bungalow. It's deceptive on the side elevation and yes, there is an increase in, in the mass of that extension, but in terms of, one of the inspector's concerns was on the steepness of the slope, it is now not too dissimilar to the, the bungalow that stands there in terms of its roof slope. The, the comments about the permitted development rights would mean that windows would have to be obscured. That's not the case. The applicants could put in a, let's go back to this plan, side elevation here, if they chose to put in clear glazed windows along that elevation, that would not contravene their permitted development rights. Permitted development doesn't address obscure glazing and that's one of the problems with it. It can be quite unneighbourly and it doesn't require planning permission. The indicative plan that we have before you to say what could happen, the, the applicants have shown that to be an obscure glazed bathroom window. They don't have to do that. Permitted development doesn't cover overlooking at all, it's just physical form.
Thank you, answered all my questions. Thank you, Vice Chairman. I think councillor Bath was next, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I've got a couple of questions. The neighbours mentioned about the loss of light and I just wanted to have some comment on any light, lack of light that will be affecting their property, please.
Excuse me, yes, we've given consideration to all of the sort of neighbourly elements within the report and that would include the impact that the proposal would have on them in terms of loss of light. And we've concluded that there wouldn't be any significant adverse impact through a loss of light and I believe the inspector also conclude, came to a similar conclusion in his appeal decision in dismissing the previous appeal. That was dismissed on the bulk and mass of the roof rather than any light impacts.
Thank you. The Juliet balcony at the back, would that be allowed under permitted development rights?
Yes.
And the final question is, the agent said that the expanse of the roof with permitted development rights would actually be more than the expanse of the roof on this application. Would you say that that was the case?
I think that might be referring to the sort of the bulkiness of it and the inclusion of a dormer window on the side would, would probably likely add to that perception of bulk on that side facing the neighbour because it would actually project away from the roof slope rather than just the roof slope sloping up and away from, from the neighbouring property.
I thought I saw councillor Spittle indicate, did you? Thank you councillor Spittle.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Yes, my question is, involves the height. I noticed that, and I really am grateful for this summary of information which shows actual figures and it's very easy to actually identify the, the way that the building is going to be changed. In particular, I noticed that the ridge height is only 0.9 metres, which is equivalent, I've just done the maths, of 2.95 feet. Can the officer advise me, is the proposed ridge height likely to be higher than that of 129 Muddford or is 129 Muddford higher than the proposed, than what is proposed? Which, I mean, 129 did seem quite an imposing property when I looked at this after, this morning, yeah, or today.
We haven't got detailed measurements to hand on the height of 129 Muddford Lane, but what we can do is just bring back up the photographs that show, I mean, obviously in photograph A, Cricket Close is slightly closer to us, so that would probably alter the perception a little bit, but photographs A and C are probably the best ones to give some idea of the relative heights of 129 Muddford Lane and Two Cricket Close.
Thank you councillor Spittle, does that satisfy your question?
Yes, although I would have appreciated actual figures, you know, having been an accountant myself. The other thing, mention of, is it Mute Haven Residents' Association, presumably Mute Haven, is that the block of flats that is nearest to Stumpet or whatever the road is? Or is it the other one, you know, which, on the map, on the site location map, which is Mute Haven Block of Flats?
Yeah, I've just brought back up the, the objectors' address map and it is the one that's indicated with the yellow dot.
So, it's quite at a distance from the actual site.
Yes, there is a reasonable distance between.
Thank you councillor Spittle. Councillor, Mr Hall.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. Well, I'd like to ask on permitted development, would the officer agree? My understanding of permitted development is not straightforward or easy to work out and it seems to me that we're largely a threat, we grant or we have permitted development which could be inappropriate development. Could you have your opinion on the permitted development side because that does concern me?
I think as my, my colleague has said, we've got an indication of what the applicant could do under permitted development. We've had a look at that plan, they could actually do slightly more than that because you can have a two-storey rear extension under certain circumstances as well, which the applicant haven't, hasn't chosen to indicate. Yes, you're right, it's complicated and it's each application on its merits and there are so many permutations that you can put together as to what is permitted, what isn't. That is one interpretation put forward to you this evening, which is how the applicant could exercise their permitted development rights. There are other permutations that they could choose, but we would then assess what they submitted, because you can usually now apply for a certificate to prove one way or the other whether it is permitted development and we assess each application against all the criteria set out in the general permitted development order, which, as I've brought you before, is quite complex. So, that's one interpretation, there could be different interpretations, but they could all still fall within permitted development. And as we've discussed before, what you can do under permitted development sometimes can be unneighbourly and the unneighbourly side of it, you can't take into account when considering an application for whether the permitted development proposed is lawful or not.
You very much for that very clear answer.
Thank you councillor Hall. Councillor Bath, you want to come back with a question?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I missed out one of my questions. It was to do with the fact that 129 wasn't allowed a Juliet balcony. Is that because that would have had direct impact on the neighbours behind because of the, the vision, the, the aspect of the, the direction of that Juliet balcony compared to this one?
If we look at photograph B on your screen, if the Juliet balcony was proposed and in particular photograph C as well, if there was a Juliet balcony proposed in that gable end, I can understand why it was suggested that it wasn't put there because, yes, I think that would have directly overlooked the immediate rear to the existing application site and it's the immediate rear of someone's property that we've always considered is the most sensitive and yes, I can see why that was objected to.
Right, members, any more questions for the officers before? Yes, councillor Spittle.
Following on from what councillor Bath said, are you then saying with regard to the Juliet balcony, that this hasn't got, this is unlikely to have an effect on the immediate rear of 129?
The inspector considered that because the, the rear elevation in terms of the Juliet balcony before you this evening is the same as the rear elevation to the application that came to committee a year ago to the, on one day difference. And what the inspector said in paragraph 10 of his decision notice, if I read it out, hopefully that will be clear, the rear first floor windows serving a Juliet balcony would only enable overlooking of a relatively limited part of the rear garden of 129 Muddford Lane and at a particularly oblique angle. The ground floor windows in the flank of the side extension should, could be glazed with obscure glass. In these circumstances, there will be no unacceptable overlooking, either actual or perceived, despite the use of part of the garden referred to as a sitting-out area with a patio. So, I think the inspector is very clear on that, he has assessed that and considered that there's no unacceptable overlooking.
Thank you councillor Spittle. Councillor Jones, did you have a question for the officer?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. A number of fairly small points, but I think it would be telling. We are looking, are we not, if we can look at the plans again? Now, can we go back to look at that, keep going? There. Now, the, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the side elevation in the top right-hand corner, now, that is what will be facing 129. I see. The red is what they will see what is there at the moment, the red line is what is there at the moment.
Correct.
The slight increase in the dotted line from, I take it the solidish lines, the hatched lines are the application. Yeah. And therefore the black dotted lines, the first set of black dotted lines, no, not that one, the, the one that, yes, shows the application refused this time last year. Am I correct? Thank you. And so, we are, the, the people in 129 will be looking at the hatched bit there. Okay, thank you very much for that. Can I take these points that was raised by a previous speaker? What is the difference in height between the present ridge line and the ridge line as it would have been?
Yes, the, the existing ridge line of the bungalow at the moment is, is indicated in table summary of information at section three of the report. The approximate ridge height of the existing bungalow is 5.65 metres and the current proposal before the committee would change that ridge height to 6.25 metres.
And the refused one would have been?
The previous refused scheme was 6.55 metres.
And that's...
I think this was in the, in the documents councillor Jones.
Thank you, Mr Spittle, I have been able to read for some time. This may come as a surprise to some people, I'm just trying to make absolutely sure that I do have the position clear and that I have not misread everything and I, I am sure that that is a laudable objective that people would wish. The next point that concerns me, we have had a comment regarding the objection from the Mute Haven Court, the flats at the back. If there is an objection and it is, seems to me that some sort of doubt was cast on the fact that it might be a little more remote than, than effectively, but have it, looking at an aerial photograph, it does seem to me that the curtilage of the block of flats where the objectors are is actually fairly close to the, is, does share a boundary and therefore, just as anybody else who shares a boundary, they have the right to object and I am correct, am I not?
Are you putting that question to the officers councillor?
If they share, they do share, the two curtilages share a common boundary.
They do and the previous reason for refusal on the last application related to overlooking, but members only chose to consider the overlooking to 129. Members did not at that time consider that it was undue overlooking to the flats and the inspectors considered the application. And the inspectors considered the application in the round. They considered the all issues. They start again. And have considered that there's no overlooking from the Juliet balcony on the rear elevation. So the inspector would have had that previous objection from the residents, because they've reiterated that objection before him when he considered his decision.
And therefore, of course, it is still, they still have a valid right to object, and they're not as if it were several streets away.
Of course, you have a right to object, but it's what weight members can put on that objection, bearing in mind what the inspectors said when he considered that concern on the previous application.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Jones. Vice-Chair, will you have another question?
I do. Thank you. Going back to the position of Mudehaven Court. I don't know whether you'd have the figures or be able to measure it for us now, but what is the distance between the application and Mudehaven Court? And is that distance something that should be taken into consideration? Or is it too far when we're talking about overlooking anyway?
The building-to-building distance is approximately 39 metres.
And I believe there's a minimum distance to be considered when you're talking about overlooking buildings?
It's usually about 20 metres back to back.
So it's about double further away. Thank you.
Right, members, any more questions for the officers? Well, I think we've completed the questions very adequately. I'm going to ask councillor Barth to open the debate, because she is the other ward councillor. Councillor Barth, if you'd like to.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have been round to the site and I have given this a lot of consideration. And a lot of the questions have answered a lot of my queries around this. I can absolutely understand why the change to 129 of this development is going to impact on them. However, I do believe that the applicants have overcome the issues that we refused it on previously. And bearing in mind the comments that we had from our inspector and the reason the inspector upheld our refusal, I believe now the applicants have overcome the reasons that the inspector upheld our refusal. And so therefore, I do not believe that there are any planning grounds that we can now refuse this application. And so I would be happy to propose the application as set out for approval.
Thank you, councillor Barth. Members, any more debate on this? Or does councillor Barth have a second? Vice-Chair?
I'm happy to second that recommendation. I agree. I think that the reduction is sufficient to satisfy the inspector. I feel that the fallback position of the permitted development would potentially mean that we lose some control over what is put there. And by keeping the planning, we have the ability to have some control over it. So I'm happy to second.
Thank you, Vice-Chair. Councillor Spittle, you are going to speak.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I mean, I can sympathise with the neighbours of 129 Mudford Lane because when you buy a property, you also develop it. It is your, and you're able to use the grounds of it. You don't anticipate having any development alongside it. But unfortunately, with planning, there are certain limitations. And having, this is the third, I believe, application that has gone, that the applicant has made for two cricket close. And they have listened to the inspector and adapted, as my colleagues have just said, to what the inspector had actually said. For example, he went, he mentioned about no overlooking, et cetera. I can appreciate the situation about Juliet balconies, but if there was a family there, then naturally, if they wish to have a large window, then it is essential that you have some protection to prevent any problem. And unfortunately, I can appreciate what they may have had installed in the garden of 129 Mudford Lane. Unfortunately, that doesn't necessarily have to be considered in a planning application of your neighbours. So, as I said, I can appreciate having also visited the site and realised what has happened on 129 Mudford, which has been developed beautifully. And this is the first property in the close to actually have a bit enlarged. But I'm afraid bearing in mind the inspector, and we all know that if we overrule the officers, there could be problems, I'm quite happy to propose or to agree with the proposal I set out.
Thank you, councillor Spittle, for your supporting. I'm going back to the Vice-Chair only because she has a question about the conditions, having seconded the proposal.
Thank you. I do apologise, everyone. I was just scanning through the conditions to make sure I was happy with them. And I've realised there's no condition in there that prevents the flat roof from ever being used as a balcony. And I wonder if we need to condition that, please?
I think I saw a lot of head mod on it. So I think...
I can confirm that will be a sensible condition to add. Yeah.
Right, I'm going to ask the proposer if that would be something that she would accede to.
Yeah, I think that's a very sensible idea. I'm happy to go on with that.
So we now have, as set out, with that addition into the conditions, so that would be condition seven, I think, wouldn't it? All right, councillor Hall, you were wanting to enter the debate.
Yes, please, Madam Chairman, because I know the area very well. In fact, I remember a school friend of mine, his dad set out the whole cricket pitch and put up a bid in. And I played cricket there many years ago, so more years than I can remember. So I do know the area well. And I'm pleased that they've now put that refusal, any balcony on that flat, really very sensible. So thank you very much.
Right, councillor Hall, thank you. Councillor Jones, you're indicated.
Thank you, Chairman. You know, there are times when I think some members of this committee are very long on sympathy and very short on empathy.
Well, I don't think we'd, I don't think I want to hear that, councillor Jones.
Into a relevant point on that. Because we can all sympathise with people and we say we feel, we feel your pain. How many of us actually, and I say this as someone who's been told on a number of occasions, you don't have any empathy, naturally imagine living in one of the affected properties? Now, if we could go back, please, to the side plans. Side plans, please. Thank you. Now, the inspector refused, and this is what we have to look at. The inspector concluded that the proposal would have an overbearing impact, overbearing impact on the neighbouring occupiers at 129 Mudford by reason of the increased bulk and mass, given the proximity to the back of the property and the rear garden. Now, discount the other ones, the overlooking. Let's try and think what we mean by overbearing, because this is an unacceptable impact on the amenities of the neighbours. Think about the small bungalow with the red dotted line. And then think about the much bigger bungalow. And you're looking at it not from, as in a previous discussion, from as somebody said, well, you're looking at it from a long time, long way away, so it doesn't matter. You're not looking at it from a long way away. You're looking at it from quite a short distance away. And the inspector, it depends what you mean by short, doesn't it? But the inspector obviously thought that this was too near. Proximity means near. Now, that is obviously, to my mind, they have done something to try and resolve it. But what they've done is they chopped a bit off the corner there, and they chopped a little bit off the top of the protruding bit. But there's still left a huge chunk, more than three or four times the removed bit sticking up there. Now, this is what I meant by empathy. We have, on this one, we have to be subjective and say, is this an acceptable impact? I do not believe it is, Madam Chairman. We look at these things very often. We say, you know, okay, it's not ours, we won't worry about it. We've got to worry about it. We've got to take this. I cannot support approval because I believe that this is, this application has not done enough to meet the inspector's reservations.
Thank you, councillor Jones. Have we got any more debate round the table? Right, I'm going to, so the recommendation is as set out. We've got the conditions, which we've all read. And we've got the extra condition. Do you want to read that out, Lindra, as it's an extra one, please?
Well, I haven't got the exact wording, but it'll be something to the effect that the flat roof extension, that we ran the hall of the flat roof, not just the rear, because there's a side element as well, shall not be, we'll take the permitted development rights away to use that as a balcony, will take away rights to put up any form, means of enclosures that can be used at all. We have a standard wording, but I haven't got it exactly in my head. So if you're happy with that.
Thank you, Lindy. I'm sure the Vice-Chair is happy with that. And we've got the informatives as set out. Right, I'm going to ask the vote. Are those in favour of the recommendation? Those against? Those abstaining? Okay, thank you. I'm not switched.
May I have my dissent noted, please?
Daniel, thank you. Right. Moving on down the agenda. Would you like me to pause a moment in case you want to leave the room? Right, thank you, members. We're going to move on now to item, item 4B, which is Wick Lane Car Park. Who's speaking on this?
Thank you, Chair. Okay, this planning application proposes the demolition of a section of wall within the Wick Lane car park, which is in a poor state of repair as a result of plant entry growth. Other works include sections of repair and rebuilding, although these works of repair don't require planning permission. So here we have the location plan showing the sighting of the wall highlighted in red. And the blue area showing land within the council ownership. So vehicular access to the car park is via Wick Lane, sorry, from Wick Lane and on foot, pedestrian access from Drury Gardens to the north west. So the wall is highly visible from public viewpoints. The exact date of the wall is unknown, but it's constructed in parts of historic brickwork and stonework. And so it's considered to make a positive contribution to the character and appearance of the conservation area. So here we have a detailed plan of the wall and the proposed works. The orange section is where there'll be some deconstruction and reconstruction, where there are weak sections. The blue section is where there'll be some stitching and repointing. And the red section is where there'll be demolition down to a height of 300 to 400 millimetres above the ground floor level. So here we have a more detailed plan of the wall proposed for demolition. And as you can see, there are a number of cracks within the wall. And the section through top right shows its instability as a result of two sycamore trees, which lie within close proximity to it. And lastly, we have some pictures of the wall. So starting from top left, wall view F and A running down. That's the wall where there'll be some stitching and repointing. Views B and C, that's the wall proposed for demolition. As you can see, there is some Harris fencing around the wall as well, owing to its instability. And view D to E, right the way along the bottom, the longest section of wall there, is proposed for repointing and rebuilding in sections. Those sections are highlighted. You can just about see the red crosshatching at the bottom. So in relation to the section of wall proposed for demolition, it's considered that due to its relatively recent date and its poor condition, its demolition is not considered to result in harm to the significance of the conservation area and therefore is recommended for approval. Subject conditions are set out within section nine of the committee report. Thank you.
Right, thank you for that. Members, oh, yes. Right, well, don't fight about it.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. What I'd like to ask, if I may, is that with this extra work that's going to be done, I think it's very necessary, of course, that wall is dangerous and it could fall. So I would like to ask, are we reducing any of the car parking spaces? Will they still remain the same area that we've got now, please?
Through, Chair. After the works have completed, there'll be the same number of car parking spaces. But during works, I understand that they will have to cordon off some car parking spaces for safety reasons of the contractors carrying out the work. So the longest section of wall, I think there are 10 car parking spaces. And within the other section of wall highlighted blue, there are four disabled car parking spaces. So it's possible that for a number of weeks, possibly two to four weeks, there could be temporarily some loss of car parking availability there.
May you come back, Madam Chair?
Is that a planning consideration, though?
Well, I think one of the considerations I would like to know is that when it is complete, it won't have any encroachment at all. It will still remain the same as we've got now. That's the main thing. Because it was concerned with some residents that they're going to lose a bit of ground with the building of the wall. And that's not the case. So I'm happy with that. Thank you.
Right, councillor Spittle was next.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, again. Unfortunately, the pictures are not very large and very clear. But could the officer just confirm for my own satisfaction? This is the wall that has got light buttresses going down onto the ground, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah. Are those going to be removed? And also, are they of any historical significance?
Yes, there are buttresses, but they will help hold it up. So the long length of the wall, the plans show maintenance. And there are bits that are bulging and bits that are cracking. So this is a repair to ensure the stability of the wall long term. The element to come down, I think, is so far gone that it's dangerous and it's not worth repairing. The historic element, the really historic element of the wall will be retained and maintained. And those buttresses are integral to that.
Thank you very much, because that's what did concern me. Although, just talking to my colleague on my left, this was, the whole car park was actually part of a private house. It was a bungalow, wasn't it, actually? So I just wondered if there was any historical value to it, actually. But obviously, it's up to the historians to come and advise us appropriately. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, councillor Spittle. I think I had councillor Barth, did I? I know councillor Neil, you're heritage champion, but I think councillor Barth was first. I know councillor Neil, your heritage champion, but I think councillor Barth was first.
I'm happy to defer to the heritage champion first, if he wants to go first.
I'll take that. I have a question about the demolishing of the wall insofar as that, well, in the conclusion it says the loss of a small section. It is 10 metres, and I don't think 10 metres is a small wall. It's about 30 odd feet in English money over there. It's about 30 or 40, yeah. So I don't consider it small. It is still heritage because it might not be as old as the other bird wall. It is Victorian, or alleged to be around Victorian.
Councillor, is this a question? We're still in question.
Yes, I'm concerned about the removing of the wall. I'd rather see that some work was done on the trees, and sycamores are normally just there as where they fly, who fly, leave their seeds, so more like, dare I say, a weed. So I would like to see that we try and do something about the height that gets left remaining, because it is near the, it is in the car park, and I feel that if it's not quite high enough, cars will be hitting it, backing it into it, reversing. The wall will come down, and then it'll end up being, put in the bin, and we'll lose the heritage completely. I'd also like, it's not a planning consent, but I'd like a plaque on there.
Councillor, was that actually a question? Because I couldn't quite, couldn't quite find them. So councillor Barth, then, a question?
Yeah, the question is, bear in mind that a lot of the damage that's been done to this wall has occurred because of the vegetation that's grown up it and around it. Are we, at the same time as repairing the wall, looking to remove something like the ivy that's growing up and the trees that are sort of roots are damaging it at the same time?
Through you, Chair. Yes, I confirm, they will be removing the vegetation as part of the repair works and using herbicides as well, I think, to make sure that they don't return.
Well, I understand the trees will be retained because they're mature and out of feature, and we don't want to see the loss of the trees, which is why the more recent element of the wall is proposed to be demolished. And we know how sensitive Drury Garden trees are, and we don't like touching trees in that area.
If I may, if I may, I would like to say that the wall was there before the trees.
Vice chairman. Thank you. Going back to the part of the wall that's going to be demolished to 300 to 400 mils, does it butt straight onto the car parking space, or is there, there is space between it and the car parking spaces, isn't there? It's not... I took the map with me to have a look, and I couldn't quite get my head around which bit was going to be made smaller, and it is, but I believe it's only on one side, there's green, on one side there's green, and on the other there's not.
Yes, it's got a planted area in front on the south side, but it could be adjacent to parking spaces.
But it's adjacent to not at the rear of, isn't it? So it's less likely that someone's going to actually back in. I can understand the heritage champion's concerns that actually cars might back into it, knock it over, but obviously it's less likely if they're coming alongside it than actually backing into it. That's why I'm asking the question.
They also come round that way, and they need to turn. So if they don't see the high enough wall, then they're going to miss it out their window
Members, are we still asking questions now? Have we got any more questions? Right, councillor Hall, is this one more question?
Last question, Madam Chairman, is the fact that this wall is crumbling, and you've got up to three years on the planning. I think that this should be an urgent job and be done as soon as possible.
Yes, I don't think that that was a question, actually. So, members, if we want to go into debate, right, well, I'm going to ask the heritage champion and then the ward councillors if they wish to open the debate. So heritage champion, do you wish to open the debate?
No, I will just, I thought I had, but I will go back over what I said. I'm not too happy about the trees still being left there, or the two sycamores particularly. Yes, they are fairly good trees, but replacements can be put in, and they don't have to, the wall was there before the trees there, in my opinion. It is a Victorian wall, even though it's not as long a heritage as the rest of the wall. But I feel that it ought to be left to be marked out. If it's going to come down, then there needs to be some sort of marking to illustrate where the wall was, and maybe a plaque to say what it was.
Right, so councillor, you were in favour in general, but you'd like to add a plaque to the actual recommendation. Okay. Councillor Hall, you're the senior.
Ward councillor, I'd like to propose a set out, but if you do want a plaque, and councillor Neil can arrange that, I'm happy to go along with that. Because it is an important wall, but I think the main thing is the safety, and I think that that is paramount. So I'm happy with the recommendation, and if councillor Neil wants to... Well, I think that can be sorted out when they're on site to do that, and I think, you know, they're not going to just make it so it won't, it will be not, they'll be sensible when they do it. I've got faith in our conservation officer that that'd be right.
Thank you, councillor Hall. So you're proposing with the plaque?
Well, we can't put a plaque on, I mean, that's...
Okay. Councillor Grace, you're the other ward councillor.
Yeah, I would like to second councillor Hall as set out, please, with the plaque.
Thank you. Members, have we got any debate? Oh, sorry, yes, Mrs.
Sorry, can I clarify that the plaque is not a planning matter? The council owns the wall, so if the councillor, in its, through its property services wishes to put a plaque on the wall, then I would prefer you to discuss that outside the planning committee, and as not to minit that as it's something we can't deliver.
Right, thank you.
Just to make that clear, is that okay?
Thank you for that very sensible advice, and we take notice. Thank you very much. So we'll leave it as it is.
As is, thank you. So we've got, we've got a proposal and second as set out. Who was indicating? Councillor Jones, I think.
Thank you, Chair, and through you, if this were private property, I think we would be talking about an advisory that we would like to see a plaque put in. I don't know whether we need to do that for the council, but can the, can it be conveyed to the property services department that this is the committee's wish?
We can send them an email tomorrow morning.
Yes, thank you, councillor Jones. Councillor Barth, were you wishing to speak?
Just to say that I wanted to congratulate the officer on the very clear setting out of the information and all the views and everything. I think it made it, it's quite a complicated thing, and you've made it actually really clear to understand, so I just wanted to say thank you for that.
Thank you, councillor Barth. Any more debate round the table? Right, we have the proposal, recommendation as set out. In favour? Right, thank you, members. Now, now most of the group is going to leave, yes, that's fine. Anybody who has an interest, please leave now. We're just awaiting the members who are leaving to leave, thank you. Right, members, thank you. We're moving on now to agenda item 4C. Which officer is going to speak on this, please?
This is me. This is a relatively small extension to 24 St Margaret's Avenue. It only comes to committee this evening as the applicant is a fellow councillor. This is the application site. See here, overlooking the open, open area. The property has been extended and altered in the past. The proposal is basically, at the moment, there is a hip on this roof at first floor, and the proposal is to put a gable end there and a window here, a window here, and extend a dormer window in this location. Taken some photographs, so this is the roof in question. Proposal is to put that as a gable end and put a window in there, extend that dormer, make it longer, and then put a dormer on the reverse elevation. So these are the floor plans at the moment. This is the bedroom in question, where the alterations proposed. So at the moment, you see, it's got a single dormer window looking down the side of the property towards the open space. That's the existing roof plan, existing elevation, so it's this area here in question, and that dormer will change. So what we're going to do now is extend bedroom three, so it's no additional accommodation at first floor, it's just an increase in floor area of the, of this bedroom, put a window in this elevation here, and that's not the most up-to-date plan. Apologies for that, because there's another one, which I went through with my colleague earlier, and actually it's got a dormer window on this elevation, which is not shown on there. So I will, the most up-to-date plans that I have gone through this evening, before I came to the committee this evening, do show a dormer on that side as well, and a window, that window and one here. On my, in terms of street scene, in terms of impact, the roof elevation and the roof extension, this little bit here, is absolutely fine. If we go back to the location here, so there's a new window in that extension there, which looks to the back of this property, so I would propose an additional condition, that that window is obscure glazed, and also there's a proposal to put an additional window in that elevation there, and that window should be obscure glazed, which leaves an extended dormer window on this elevation, which has got the best view, to be honest, because it's the one that overlooks the open space. So the window, the room has a lot more light, but to prevent undue overlooking to this property, which is heavily overlooked by the adjoining property anyway, and there are also dormer windows in this location which do overlook this property, that we obscure glaze that elevation and that elevation there. So it's the, the rear elevation and the side elevation. This property, again, is overlooked because of the very tight urban grain in this area, there's a lot of mutual overlooking. So this is not introducing any new windows into an area that is very private at the moment. There is a lot of shared spaces in this area, but just for clarity, I'd like to make a recommendation to add an additional condition, obscure glazing the windows, except the one that looks out in that direction.
Thank you. So that would be condition four?
Yes.
We've got the conditions one, two, and three here. Right. Thank you. Members, whose questions? Vice chairman?
Sorry, this is probably a procedural question rather than a planning question. When we've had previous applications, when we've not had the full information, we've actually ended up deferring the application to another night. Is our legal officer happy if we continue? I feel that I've understood what is being done, I would just like that confirmed, please.
I actually brought down, just for my own benefit, to make sure I knew exactly what it was, the plans, the paper plans, and as there are so few of you, I'm quite happy to go to each member and show you the paper plans that I have before me, just to clarify. And you can see where I've doodled all over them to make sense to myself. So would that be of assistance?
I think that would be of assistance, particularly as the applicant is another member, I think we ought to see the floor plans.
Yes, thank you, vice chairman. Right, so as long as members are happy with that, we will look at the paperwork.
Should they be fixed, fixed code?
Yes, hold on a moment, councillor Neil, thank you.
Yes, well, they can be restricted in some way. Restricted, yes. The standard conditions.
Right, members, the paperwork is coming round to councillors Neil, Barth, and Grace. Thank you for your patience, members. We're just waiting to check the paperwork. Thank you for your patience, members. We're just waiting to check the paperwork. Right, so can I ask the officers, are we confident we've got the up-to-date information so we can carry on decision-making?
I think the plans that are actually on that overhead in front of you are the latest plan. I do apologize for that, because I did go through the face, I said, can you go through with this with me so I can work out exactly what's what? But we've checked on the website, and the one with the offending dormer here has been, that has been removed, that plan. It has been marked superseded, and it has been publicised because we've exported it to the website. So members of the public would have had the opportunity to see that that dormer on that side, which overlooks the neighbour, has been deleted. But I still think that window there should be obscure glazed, because it directly overlooks the neighbour's garden. So, yes, I still would prefer additional condition four, with that window in the gable end to be obscure glazed and restricted opening. This dormer here, which, again, overlooks the open space, has been enlarged and is a significant window and is sufficient to serve that room. So apologies for the mix-up. I will make sure we don't do that again.
Right, thank you, Mrs King. And can I just turn to our legal officer and ask if he's content?
I'm content, yeah, I can see that. Obviously, all the plans have been uploaded and exported to the website, so the public can obviously see that by accessing the portal on the internet.
Righty-ho. Members, now, after seeing all of the plans, have we questions?
Councillor Grace. Yes, I'd just like to clarify before making a proposal on this one. So are we, I just want to check that I'm correct. We are definitely doing one window glazed or both window glazed? Or are we doing, and with the new conditions of both windows being glazed or one being glazed? Only one? Only one, I thought it was, but...
I'm proposing is the, one is the gable, the gable end window, that one?
Yes, that's what I thought, yes.
Is obscure glazed and restricted opening. The extended dormer, which is this extended dormer, which is this window here, is, basically looks over the road and the open space. So has no impact on neighbours. And that one remains as a clear glazed windows with no restrictions on opening.
I understand now. I was just clarifying it all before I made a proposal on it. Thank you.
Right, thank you, councillor Grace. Well, we're still in questions, more questions, vice chairman.
Thank you. Just a very quick question. Could we add into the conditions that if a window or dormer was put on to the other side, that it would be obscure glazed in the future?
The easiest thing would be to remove the permitted development rights to put it up in the first place.
Thank you, vice chairman. Any more questions around the table? Right, we had a proposal from councillor Grace. Do I have a second, councillor Barth?
Yeah, I'm happy to second that proposal with the additional conditions.
Right, thank you, members. Do we have any debate on this? No, I think we've covered it very adequately. Thank you. Can we go to the vote on it? Thank you. Oh, yes, Mrs King.
Sorry for the mess. Can I just clarify then that we've wanted additional condition four to obscure glaze that southern window with restricted opening? And then a fifth condition to remove permitted development rights to put a further dormer window on the side east elevation. Thank you.
Yes, I think we're content that councillor Grace and councillor Barth are speaking to that. Thank you. Right, can we now go to the vote, members? Thank you. Right, thank you, members. I think we've covered everything tonight, so may I thank you very much for attending the meeting? Thank you very much.